.......................................
Please remain standing for invocation by Pastor Steve Burgerson. Welcome.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God, the rights and liberties that we have as citizens of this nation come from your hand. Lord, keep us ever vigilant as citizens of these rights and liberties so that we might bring you honor and glory. Tonight, we ask that your wisdom, your power, and your compassion guide our town council as they deliberate over matters that concern our future and also the current concerns of our citizens. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Burgerson, from Shepherd Hill Lutheran Church. Roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Leget.
Here.
Councilmember Arshambo.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
All right, excellent. We have a couple of birthdays coming up on council on the 24th, just right around the corner. Councilmember Leggers. Hank Leggers.
Legge.
Hank Leggers. Henry Legge. He gets his name butchered too often. I gotta join in. Happy birthday coming up.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm still looking younger than you are.
You are. You are. Good genes, for sure, and clean living, I'm sure. And also Dennis Brown, Councilmember Brown's birthday coming up on the 2nd of June, so happy birthday, you guys.
And I'll have to say it's green living and self-denial.
You're living to Councilmember Legge. I do not have a company events, although there are so many fun events out there. There's too many to mention, so that's why there's no report on that this evening. I want to move on to the scheduled public appearance presentations, and this is where I'd like to recognize Councilmember Mike Arshambo for his years of service on our Fountain Hills Town Council. Councilmember Arshambo, would you mind meeting me down here? And I have a gift for you from your town.
Can I hit the gavel?
You can hit the gavel. Yeah, hit the gavel.
Where am I? Wait, how about I just use the pointer?
Come on down there.
They took the battery out of mine. Eight years.
You've served us so well, and personally, I've learned so much from you, and you've been a great mentor as a council member for me and as a mayor, a great deal of support, and you've served your community as council member for eight years, but you've done so much more in our community than we could be up here for hours talking about all the giving and the generosity you've shown to your community, and most of all, the care and compassion you have for our community and as a representation of the years you've had on council. I want to give you the ceremonial fountain pen for you to take away with you and just know how thankful we are, how many lives you've touched, and how much good you've done, and how much you've challenged each and every one of us by being prepared and coming to your council meeting and contributing at every meeting there is. So, thank you very much for the work you and the service to your community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. I have a two-hour speech for later. If any of the other council members wish to share a comment or two, feel free to at this time, and I know Councilmember Arshambo has a few words at the end of our meeting that he'll share, but anyone wish to share anything, obviously, we'll see each other as well. This weekend, most of us will be able to get together and celebrate at dinner, but Councilmember Dickey.
What are you hitting me for?
That's my last time to hit you, at least up here. Well, it's actually, it's been a real treat to know Mike. I've known him since the early 80s, and through those Thursday night coannis dinners.
Oh, my God, yeah.
And watching our boys jump around with bags on their heads to Footloose. That was for scouts, it wasn't... But Mike has always demonstrated unselfish public service to our community. His wife, Charlotte, and his kids, and now his grandkids, and Mike has built a foundation here in Fountain Hills, a strong family and business ties, and of course, loyal, dependable friendship. One of his friends, Kathy Nacola, who we lost an unbelievable five years ago yesterday, the 19th, grew to rely on you, on him, much like I do here on the council, as a thorough and a thoughtful and a very trustworthy colleague. And she was like him in that her motivations were always driven by community benefit and with unbelievable generosity. So, Mike, I will miss you up here on the dais. I won't hit you anymore, but I do get to stay your friend, and I will continue to expect your advice, and I expect you to continue to contribute, of course, and I surely join the mayor and the council in thanking you for your leadership up here and to our town as a whole.
Thank you so much.
Very nice. Almost seemed like this was a fair...
I knew you were running out of speech.
Yeah, exactly.
It keeps me on...
Councilmember Legge, I know you wanted to say something.
I've been on council for four years now, Mike, so I've had an opportunity to get to know you better and to work with you, and I echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Dickey and Mayor Schlum. You've dedicated eight years, and that's a big chunk of your life to the town of Fountain Hills, and I know you're passionate about the town, and I think you've demonstrated that in your service, so, once again, it's been my pleasure to serve with you, and I have a sense that you'll continue to be active in the town of Fountain Hills, so good luck to you moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilmember Cantino.
Yes, Mike, I just want to thank you for the eight years and what's going on, and I do want to tell you that the Dennis Cantino Kool-Aid is selling well, and I would like to have you have a bottle, but we sold out today, so when you see my card out there that says Dennis Cantino Kool-Aid, don't forget to stop. I'll sell you a bottle. What's the flavor of the day? Flavor was raspberry today. We thought that you liked raspberries.
Councilman Brown.
Likewise, it's been a real pleasure, Mike, to serve only one year with you. You're a strong, sound councilman, and the leadership that you've shown and shown to me is greatly appreciated, and I mean that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Very nice. And I'll come to wrap them. Thank you.
Mike, I really done a version of Thanks for the Memories for you, but I didn't know we were going to do this, so I'll just have to say Thanks for the Memories.
You're welcome.
The... You've left your mark all over our town already, and I know you're not going anywhere, so it'd be great to...
Too many drinks.
Few more, which you'll do, but I think for the $400 a month you've been paid over the last eight years, we've got our money's worth, for sure, but thank you for your service to our town, Mike, and you got one more meeting, so hopefully you can make it all the way through this one tonight.
Yeah, Mike goes sleep on us, but see how long it goes.
Thank you, everybody, and now we'll move into calls to the public. Now, we have a couple of speaker cards.
Mayor, you want to read the proclamation?
Oh, thank you. I missed that, sorry. Thank you, Beth.
Red poppies, yeah.
Oh, I should've remembered what my poppy I'm wearing today. I was fortunate to be the first poppy purchaser from our Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the poppies go directly to assist those veterans in need in our local VFW. They'll be selling poppies, so get your poppies around town. We've got a proclamation to signify the poppies. It reads, "Whereas America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and now therefore IGT Schlum, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Mayor of Public County, Arizona hereby proclaim to all citizens of our community that Veterans Day foreign, our Veterans of Foreign Wars Pro 7507 are commended for conducting their annual Memorial Day Buddy Poppy fundraiser on May 28th and May 29th for the benefit of veterans' relief." So, make sure you get your poppies from our VFW. Thank you, Beth. Now, call to the public.
May I have one spoken here, Bruce Florence?
Right. Welcome, Mr. Florence.
Thank you. Members of council, members of staff, members of the audience, Bruce Florence, 14629 North Winston Lane. This year's budget process causes me worry. First, two scheduled budget study sessions were never held this spring. They would've been open to the public. The opportunity for public scrutiny and public input was thus drastically reduced. We should never be put in a position where we are rushed. Why this happened is equally as important to me as why it was not challenged. Second, as a resident, I was disappointed to read in yesterday's Times that a council member asked a staff member whether there is room for discussion. There's always room for discussion by council. In an open budget process, a council member would never have to feel the need to ask such a question. Further, I was disappointed to read that in answer to a question, a member of staff told a council member that a budget decision had already been made on certain items. That response is unacceptable. The budget is not final, the budget is not soup yet. In an open budget process, a staff member would never give such an answer. There's still room for discussion on any and all items in the budget. This budget is going to have a major impact on our lives. We all must now do some micro-managing. We must read and scrutinize the budget ourselves, especially when we are learning that services are being reduced or eliminated. The Budget Committee deals with numbers. The Budget Committee must factor in priorities that arise and when council gives direction in budget matters. We stand ready to work with you on the budget as it is being developed, but we can only do that if each of us plays an active role. By town code and state statute, final approval is your responsibility. Know what you are approving. You should expect the budget to reflect the values of your constituents. As Ziegler wrote, "Inspect what you expect." Thank you.
Thank you. That was it? Thank you. All right, move on to the consent agenda. I request a motion to approve items 1 through 4 as listed. So, move. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Mayor Schlum.
Aye.
Councilmember Legge.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Arshambo.
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero.
All right, thank you. Onto the regular agenda, item 5, presentation. Oh, I'm up out of time. Let's go.
I moved my drink.
All right, presentation by Audra Caster Thomas, Chair of our Strategic Planning Advisory Commission for Consideration and Possible Adoption of Fountain Hill Strategic Plan 2010. Welcome, Audra. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
It is with enormous enthusiasm that I'm here on behalf of the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission to present to you for your consideration and recommended adoption the update to the strategic plan. I am greeted, or this evening, Rich Schultz is with us from the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, charter member, actually, of SPAC, and others of our commission who are unable to attend. Charson, her relatives from Mexico, I'm sure she's having a delightful evening, and Kurt Dunham, our vice chair, is actually in Texas, as we speak, conducting a strategic planning workshop with a town council just outside of Houston. So, work continues, whether we're doing it volunteer or otherwise, and so we're pleased to be here. Tonight, we're going to be presenting to you, of course, the strategic plan update, and we'll be doing that by, again, reviewing the process that you're not quite familiar with. We'll provide a quick overview and introduction to the strategic plan itself and highlight the vision and values of the fundamental foundation of that product, and then provide just some highlights of the plan effort itself. As you remember, this is a four-phase program. We started with an audit of the original strategic plan, where we identified what had been implemented, what hadn't been implemented, and also identify what we wanted to do, what were some of our goals, and how did we want to tackle the strategic planning process, and ultimately, what we wanted the product to look like, and you remember, we started off the process interviewing and talking to each one of you to get your feedback. We then had an education affirmation aspect through December and fall where we went out to the residents, stakeholders, and inquired what they wanted for the future of their community. Phases 1 and 2 were heavily public involvement. In fact, it was what drove the process. In phases 3 and 4, we actually sat down and constructed that plan starting in January, and in a couple of short months, were able to deliver this product to you, and tonight, we're here at the conclusion of that process. The strategic plan update itself is built on the contributions of your citizens, our citizens, our community, and stakeholders. When I went back to total up the activities over the last year, number of meetings I or members of SPAC attended topped 80. In fact, I just stopped counting at 80, and that includes anything for meeting with organizations, stakeholders, the opportunities that we opened and had opportunities for the public to kind of talk to us, budget coordination, and meeting even with our town commissioners. We're able to receive feedback from well over 2,000 residents here in town, and with the help of partners like the Fountain Hills Times and Scottsdale Republic, we feel confident that we're able to communicate with over 20,000 residents. We provided a variety of input engagement opportunities for this process, and one of the things to remember, because it was a grassroots effort, and also because of the dynamic change we have in our communities, it's hard for folks to get out, and so we promised you that we were going to make an effort instead of inviting folks out and depending on people to come to us, that we were going to go to them. Any organization, entity, group of folks who met for cards, we asked and begged if they would just give us a few minutes of time that we can sit down and visit with them over coffee at lunch or at their standard meetings, and we were able to get a broad swath of feedback from folks that we normally wouldn't have heard from. We, of course, had traditional public engagement opportunities as well, having a couple of feedback forums at different venues around town, and ultimately, we capped this process off with an open house of the draft, public, or excuse me, the draft strategic plan. Good news, we came in significantly under budget. As you recall, when we came to you with the plan to update the strategic plan, we said that we would do it through the volunteer efforts of the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, and certainly, we dedicated all of our time and our own resources and printed things at our offices and bought things for meetings and whatnot, but we asked you to set aside $20,000 for materials, cookies, and water for public meetings and other supplies. And ultimately, when I asked Shawna to do the numbers just last week, the total public involvement effort, the total plan effort, cost the town $568.01 for total budget savings for town council. The town of Fountain Hills was 97 percent. We estimate the volunteer hours, 1,500. Frankly, it's probably more than that. I just went back and looked at all the meetings and the number of folks involved, and did a generic two hours for each meeting and each person, and it was well over that, and so with that being a, but we didn't go out and keep track, you know, if it was in a budget project, and so we just went out and hit the ground running and are confident that we spent that much time in war, not doing with SPAC, but others involved in this effort. So, here's some pictures. Over the process, we, as you remember, had issue forums in November. Here's one that we held at the New Learning Center over at the Viper School in Old St. Here's one we held at the Boys and Girls Club, and this one was really, as I told you before, a really great one, because we saw a lot of people we never would've seen before, because Rich opened up his facility and allowed us to come in. Parents, especially, were able to bring their kids, and their kids can go and play, and Rich had a bunch of activities set up for them, while their parents were able to sit in dialogue with us, and actually, a lot of kids stayed with us as well and helped their parents get it right. We also had a lot of volunteers at this effort. We had planning students from the Arizona State University Planning, Master of Planning Program come and volunteer, take notes, help facilitate, so it was a really good effort. We also met with youth, we had a youth visioning day at Fountain Hills High School, and again, went to the Boys and Girls Club. Here's a rendition of Fountain Hills, and then also asked kids what they want in Fountain Hills, and used all this information ultimately to develop the strategic plan. And then SPAC met in January. This is the first time we sat down and really worked. As you recall, the first two days of the program were public engagement. All we did was listen, so for the first six months of this project, SPAC just took notes and listened, and starting in January, we started putting pen to paper, and this is our first retreat, and I love this photo because our vice chairman, Kurt Dunham, is here looking at all kinds of words, holding his head in what can only be agony after sitting hours and hours trying to wordsmith a vision statement, as you know. Any kind of eloquent prose by committee can be torturous at times. We also had a unique aspect of the strategic planning process. Throughout the process, I was meeting with executive staff, the folks who flank you up here in front, but we also had an opportunity where we met with all staff. We had a staff retreat in the afternoon and actually asked these folks not to come, and asked everybody else to come, and some of the most enlightening and fun ideas that we got for the strategic planning process came from your own experts. You should be so proud of the talent that you have here at Town Hall. It is simply amazing. You're so lucky to have the talented, passionate individuals we do working here at Town Hall. So, the strategic plan itself. As you'll recall from reading the plan, we start off by outlining a process, again, instituting a process by which we will use the strategic plan. We'll start off and follow with you guys, starting to identify our initial goals, and ultimately, once identified, staff will go back over the winter, come up with strategies to help implement those goals, which will ultimately be incorporated into your budget, and then over the course of the next year, be evaluated as to the progress. And so, again, we're creating an institutional process by which we're going to be using the strategic plan. How is the plan formatted? It does look different than the original strategic plan, and we hope it's a little bit of an easier, more straightforward format. The skeleton of the plan is the eight values that were identified by citizens, and as Commissioner Legge has said before, the kind of like those buckets, the focus areas in which we're able to categorize our strategic directions. So, each of those focus areas identifies why is this important, a statement of why residents said this was an important value, a pledge for what we will or how we will implement and withhold and maintain that value in our community, and then the strategic direction on how we're going to choose that, and then some performance questions. That will be the tool we use to evaluate how the strategic plan is being implemented. Final element of the strategic plan is this idea box. And that's where we've put all of the specific potential ideas which, upon research and evaluation, could be used to help fulfill the strategic plan. This is intended to be an evolutionary holding place, a parking lot, if you will, for these great ideas. I know that council member, Dickey, had mentioned before, you know, we always get, council gets so many good ideas all the time, and we don't know where to store those ideas until we want to be able to pull from them and implement them. Well, this is that tool, and we hope that you use that and that residents continually add and staff continually adds to find ways to help forward the vision. In fact, right before coming in tonight, I was excited to hear that BEVAC has already identified at least one of these ideas that they would like to investigate further. It's great, but not even it's adopted yet, the strategic plan. We've already had folks out there who are willing to partner with the town and move the strategic plan forward. What is the foundation for the plan's success? Frankly, what's the foundation for the town's success? The plan states that without financial sustainability, not only will the strategic plan be difficult to implement, but frankly, the town's success is already in question. We already heard from the residents tonight in open comment, concerns, people are passionate about programs the town provides and the value they bring to our community are dismayed, but they're just on the resources there ultimately to fund them. This is critical. We need to address this now, and ultimately, the foundation for our town's success is our financial sustainability. So, what is our vision? The statement that we agonized over and presented to you ultimately in February as a result of Phase 2 of this program. Fountain Hills is a distinctive community designed to invigorate the body, mind, and spirit, and strives to be stewards of this unique enclave, dedicated to preserving the environment and visual aesthetic, and fulfilling imbalance at the Smiling Desert. To champion the diversity of experiences our residents bring to our community, and rely on this depth of experience to innovatively address our challenges. To be economically sustainable and anchor our vitality in an active, vibrant town core that serves us culturally, socially, and economically. To be civic-minded and friendly, taking responsibility for our town's success by building partnerships and investing our talents and our resources. Those eight critical values that residents identified and which serve as the skeleton of the strategic plan: civility, civic responsibility, environmental stewardship, economic vitality, education, learning, and culture, maintain and improve community infrastructure, public safety, health, and welfare, and recreational opportunities and amenities. So, again, some highlights of the strategic plan. As promised, we went back to the original strategic plan, identified those things that weren't quite yet implemented, and based on public feedback, those that were still valued by the community moved those forward, and they continue to appear in the strategic plan update. It reflects the direction we heard from you, to simplify, streamline, and have a user-friendly document, to create a long-term, vision-based strategic plan, to institutionalize a process, and ultimately, identify roles and responsibilities for that strategic planning process, and to refrain from specific task lists or price tags, especially when the economic situation is volatile as it is. And ultimately, we continue the ethic of community involvement in this community, and have delivered to you a strategic plan that is built from the citizens' contributions and is led by a citizen-defined vision and values, incorporates stakeholder and organizational ideas, and includes contributions from your own staff. Without a lot of people, this effort absolutely would not have been possible, especially for 500 bucks. We first and foremost like to thank our residents who spent an hour or two hours with us at a public evening and a public meeting, or chose to get on their computer at 3:00 AM to send a comment or a suggestion that they would like to have contribute to the strategic plan, to stakeholders or organizations and agencies in town who opened the doors and allowed us in, and ultimately, provided us feedback. To our town commissions, we went to each of our fellow commissions and was able to get their feedback throughout the process, and so we made it a fulfilling event, if you will. To our planning team, it was a group of citizens that the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission identified early to serve kind of as our witness test. We brought them in at key milestones to review our product, to make sure that we had heard and listened to the public correctly and that the product reflected that, and I don't know if anyone's here from our planning team, but really appreciate the contributions and hours of those folks. You certainly didn't have to spend it with me. Of course, my fellow commissioners from the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, it wasn't easy. Rich can attest, we spent a lot of hours, and frankly, as much of a slave driver as I was, I'm pretty impressed I wasn't subject to a coup along the way. It really was a volunteer effort, and nobody on SPAC signed up for what we ended up doing, and so I appreciate everyone staying with it and dedicating their hours and certainly their talents to this effort. Certainly, the staff. Staff was enormously helpful. We got so many great ideas, and I'd like to specifically thank Shawna Williams, who is the liaison for the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. Her dedication and ethic to this effort, to the town of Fountain Hills is amazing and a resource that really is probably undervalued, and ultimately, was such a great partner in crime, she never, ever left a phone conversation without concluding it with, what else can I do to help? It was just really great to have her on our team. And ultimately, to all of you who were so supportive and provided such great contributions to the process. So, with that, we're excited about the product, we're proud of the product, and we're anxious for your adoption.
Thank you, Audra. Look here first for a motion to adopt Fountain Hill Strategic Plan 2010.
So moved.
Second. All right, thank you. Any one from the public?
No, Mayor.
Any questions or comments from council for Audra or staff? Councilmember Arshambo?
Thank you, Mayor. Audra, you know, we met with SPAC in a joint meeting before, but I don't think the public had an opportunity to hear the dialogue that we had back and forth, and as a council member, I... The public needs to know how efficient staff... had an opportunity to hear the dialogue that we had back and forth. And as a council member, I, the public needs to know how efficient staff and the volunteers make to this town. We recently had a Volunteers' Day, and I think we had 200 people show up, maybe Shawna might be able to tell me exactly how many people were there. There was an awful lot of people. And it just demonstrates the pride that we take in this town. And I don't think this council can express enough appreciation for the effort that SPAC put forward. I had no idea you guys had not spent the $20,000. You guys need to be applauded, and staff, and especially Shawna Williams back there, who's always volunteering to do something else. You know, you see her, sometimes I see her, and she looks sprayed.
Shawna never looks sprayed.
She has her days. But SPAC, you guys, you guys just did so much more than we ever expected. And I can't, I can't tell you how much appreciation we have for the format that you guys set up, how easy it is to read. I think the public can get their arms wrapped around this very easily. And I just want to express my appreciation to you guys. And if you would pass it on to Kurt and everybody else, and Rich back there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions or comments?
Well, Mike mentioned applause.
Yes, applause, good idea. This will be embarrassing if we don't adopt it now.
Sure will.
You tell which way I'm going. I just wanted to thank you again, Audra, and thank the rest of your, the SPAC team, the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission members, Mike Dooley, Kurt Dunham, Alan Magazine, Sherwin McCluskey, our youth commissioner, Katie Meyer, Rich Schultz here, Alan Siebel, and of course, our chair, Audra Kestrel Thomas, for a year of hard work. And coming in at 97% under budget, not of budget, but under budget, spending just 3% of the budget amount's amazing, and thanks, and appreciated, thank you very much. But you guys have put in a great amount of time. And the volunteers we have here, as you pointed out in our strategic plan, to continue to leverage that are great, not wearing evidence in the role. The relook at the strategic plan was a great testament of that. The professional expertise that many of you brought, this is some of your job, part of your job, is to do this, and to generously allocate so much time and then the resources. Very much the town is indebted to you, so thank you very much. And the public involvement, you guys really stepped it up, and then you used technology as well. But she's the most impressed was you went to where the people were. And I think that's key to getting feedback. People want to give feedback, and you've probably really helped them to understand how to do that best, and by going to where they were. The ASU students, more volunteers from even outside the community leveraging them. And then you clearly spoke to all of our citizens, from the youth to the seniors, and also the business community. So that was terrific. And like you had already pointed out, the staff, the huge amount of support that this requires from staff is so much appreciated. So thank you again. We will use this. We will use this. At least for a little while. No, just kidding. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Dickie?
One comment about maybe the origin of this whole idea of strategic planning, and how I don't think it's all that common every place that you go. And so I just wanted to maybe mention former Mayor Wally Nichols and the council that got the ball rolling with this sort of far-reaching ideas to try and look ahead and take a pulse on what the people want. And of course, and how you did it was just unbelievably thorough and professional, and we really appreciate it.
Excellent. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting the plan? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
All right, thank you, Chair Kestrel Thomas. All right, next item, six, and seven and eight are all given in one report. This one is Consideration Resolution 2010-11, Abandoning Whatever Right Title and/or Interest the Town Has in a Certain Public Utility Easement, Drainage Easements Located at Northeastern Lane and Eastern Lane, Property Lines of 16607 North Paradox Drive. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This next three items are relating to easement transactions at this lot. Brian Shader, the owner of this lot, needs to legally gain the right to utilize his existing access route to his existing artist workshop area at the back of his lot. And by matter, he's asserted a prescriptive easement right to use this route. We've checked your photographs, and that has been in use for decades, actually. And MCO deeded the parcel at the rear of this lot, that you see on the upper part of your screen, to the town, and back in 1997. This item had been previously on the town council's agenda last year in October, but then removed at the request of the applicant. We've now gone through a couple additional iterations on the stipulations. Staff does recommend approval of these three items, subject to the five stipulations that are in your report. If you look at the map up on the wall, the three items are as follows. The first one is an easement abandonment. It's hard to see on this drawing because it's not colored, but the easement abandonment is at the rear of the property, on the north side and on the east side of the property. Pretty much a standard easement abandonment. All the utilities are approved, and we don't have any need for the drainage in that area. It's a public utility easement and a drainage easement. So the easement abandonment, you know, would be a consent agenda item normally, except it's with these other two items. The tear area on your screen is the area of an easement from the town to Brian Shader to be able to access around to the back of his property. The area in yellow is an easement from Brian Shader to the town to access its property, open space property at the rear of the lot. You can see the stipulations in your packets, and staff does recommend approval of this. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any other items you need to go over for item seven and eight, or was this your entire report?
This was the entire report.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. So we'll look at item number six, and get a motion on that.
Motion, that's done.
Come again?
Is that the motion that's on item six?
Yes.
From here, move to approve the abandonment of the public utility and drainage easements at 506B Block 1, Lot 59, with stipulations.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, and any questions or comments for staff or applicant? All right, thank you, Randy. All in favor of this motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
All right, item seven, Consideration Resolution 2010-11, Regarding Granting an Access Easement to Brian Shader Through a Portion of Town-owned Open Space Property to Access His Artist Workshop Area at the Rear of His Lot With Stipulations. Can we get a motion on that one?
No move.
Second.
One second, thank you. Any discussion? Anyone from the public on that one?
No, Mayor.
All right, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
And item eight, Consideration of Resolution 2010-09, Regarding Accepting the Grant of an Access Easement with and Public Utility Easement from Brian Shader. Could I get a motion on that item?
No move.
Second. All right, anyone on the public for that item?
No, Mayor.
Any discussion or questions, council, on item eight? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
All right, thank you very much, Randy. All right, on to item of the evening. Discussion of Possible Directions to Stafford regarding the town of Fountain Hills' proposed fiscal year 2010-11 budget. Welcome, Mary.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council. The next item before you is consideration of the draft fiscal year 2010-2011 budget. Prior to this, as you know, we've had two public open houses to take comments from the citizens. And last week, on May 11th, we had a council work study session on the budget. The item is brought to you tonight on the council agenda so that we can solicit comments from the citizens again, and to just have council ask staff questions on the budget, and to give us direction on how to proceed with budget. That's as much as I have of a staff report, and it's open for council questions.
All right, thank you, Mary. Anyone from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have two speaker cards. Jim Judge, followed by Bill Whitaker.
Thank you. May I welcome Mr. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, town manager, my name is Jim Judge. I'm one of the commissioners of the Senior Services Advisory Commission. I certainly currently serving as chair of our commission. There is apparently a major disagreement between the Budget Committee's proposed budget for fiscal, next year fiscal year, and the cost of the home-delivered meals program, and the 1,052 members of the senior and senior center. We have tried to resolve our differences before coming before you, but it has not been accomplished. However, we respect the honest differences with the Budget Committee and the tremendous, difficult job they have. And quite honestly, we feel that questioning each other's logic is healthy, and will only make all of us stronger. Because bottom line, we're all doing what we think is best for what's best for our town, and to me, that's very healthy. The Budget Committee is telling the council that the town is subsidizing the HDM Home-Delivered Meals Program at a total cost to the town of $9.36 a meal, and proudly will present charts and graphs showing that based on 10,800 meals served annually, the meal preparer cost, it's a local nursing home in town, that the cost for their meal preparation is roughly $70,000. And we agree on that number. The committee says the delivered supplies, heat trays, and so on is $3,271. We say it's $1,600 a year. And that money is paid by area agency on aging, and if they stop paying for it, our senior services, Inc., will pick up that cost, so there will be no additional cost to the town. The salary, staff, and benefits is $27,852. We say it's $18,600 as a part-time coordinator, part-time employee. The total program cost due to the, as proposed by the Budget Committee, is $101,171. We say it's $13,400. So obviously, we have quite a big difference. Our commissioners are saying the town is not spending a dime for the meals and gaining and gaining $5,200 in additional revenue between the price we will charge at $7 and the meal preparers charge, which is $6.48. If the HDM coordinator wages are included, the total town subsidy is $1.72 per meal, or $15,400 total. The Budget Committee defines subsidy as any unit of town that does not break even financially is considered as receiving a subsidy. I admit, the subsidy in this context is less concerning to me than what we've been hearing in council meetings, it's more of a social or giveaway program. We feel it's part of the town of Fountain Hills civic responsibility to do this. Am I out of town, Mayor?
Thirty more seconds.
Thank you. Budget Committee has determined that $9.36, as I mentioned, some of these numbers are redundant, but I think it's good to emphasize. We see that, we say there's no cost to the town for the meals themselves. The only cost to the town is the difference between $18,600 that the coordinator earns and roughly $5,000 we bring in, or roughly $13,400 is really the cost to the town, our numbers. I've said most of those things before. I've told about the bags, they are very expensive, and they wear out very quickly. We have 250 volunteers that take these bags out. They're both hot and cold bags, and they wear out very quickly. Obviously, if they're not keeping food hot or cold, it's a problem, and we have to replace them. So it's something we can't avoid. Finally, the $13,400 subsidy the town is providing for something as basic as food, inadequate months, and reliable delivery for elderly and mostly infirm, the 80-year-old human beings living in Fountain Hills, America. You know, we're America, folks. We've got to take care of these folks. They can't help themselves, in most cases. There are 250 volunteers at no extra cost to the town. They do it on their own accord, and I know the mayor personally delivers them, as well as many, many others in town. I just signed up to do it myself. It's a great program. And quite honestly, when I look at that in the light, that in my opinion, our opinion, is $13,400 to the town, it's quite honestly shameful that we're even in front of you debating this issue. That should have been resolved a long time ago, and those people shouldn't even have to worry that they're going to have to go from $6.50 to $8.50. Some people can't even afford the $6.50, therefore only taking two or three meals a week, because that's all they can afford. They need more, want more, they can't afford it. Thank you very much for your time.
Chairman, Judge. I'll give him a little more time, because he's the chair of our senior services commission, so he's speaking for more than just himself, obviously. Welcome, Mr. Whitaker.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bill Whitaker, and I've resided at 15716 East Talago since 1989, so I've been a citizen of Fountain Hills since it became a town. And I'm also on the Senior Services Advisory Commission as the previous speaker. And I have to say and tell all of you on the council and the staff here that I do agree with the previous speaker. I don't pretend to understand all the accounting that goes into it. And I have to thank certain members of staff who tried to explain it to me, but somehow I don't get it. The thing that I do get is the perception I have is that we're dealing with home-delivered meals as though we're just a box of paper clips, or a box of pencils, or something like that. And I want to impress on everybody on the council that when it comes time to make final decisions on this budget, please do not treat home-delivered meals as just another office supply. And it wouldn't hurt if you voted with your heart a little bit, too. And that's about all I have to say, and I appreciate your time, and I'm very respectful that you gave it to me, and I thank all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Thanks for your time. All right. Anyone else? That was it on speakers?
That was it.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll open it up for comments, questions, concerns, related to anything in the budget for staff. Perhaps I could ask, with that fresh in our mind, having looked at this several times, and I know we'll talk more about it with the commissioners, individually offline, online, at all times, so we make sure we address this as correctly as we can. I know that with that said, and it was alluded to, that accounting for town accounting, particularly going into program budgeting, is a little more difficult, but it's certainly much more comprehensive. So understanding all of our costs, that's why we're dealing with this, that's why we have this issue. Previously, it was understood that that item, home-delivered meals, was a service that paid for itself. Now with the cost measures, we can understand exactly what expenses goes into that. Not that any expense would not be validated or acceptable up here, but now we do have that, that's why we do have that question. But from what I can, from what I understand, the considerations regarding the home-delivered meals program specifically were that those that were subsidized from other agencies and or from Senior Services, Inc., those folks were not going to have any additional cost, given the different scenarios we've had. The additional cost would go to those that were self-pays today and self-pays tomorrow. Their cost would be going up under the different plans that we've been considering, correct?
That is correct. The lower two tiers participants that are funded either through area agency or the United Way Grant pay nothing to participate in the program. They pay nothing for meals. The only participants who pay anything for meals are those who are self-pay.
And I think, I'm not saying that the self-pay can afford anything either. I understand there's constraints there, and I think that's, the commissioners and the public are letting us know that, and don't assume that they can pay, you know, $8.50 as was initially proposed, so to be sensitive to that. And so... So I think we'll also understand and help everyone understand how we get to the accounting as we work through this as well. We're not going to make a decision tonight, but...
I will do my damnedest to try to explain it.
Good, thank you. Vice Mayor?
This is the first year that we've used this subsidy, right? The concept of subsidy?
Understanding the program cost and looking at the revenues and expenses associated with each program.
And in this case, the subsidy is to actually offset the cost of salary?
I think it's salary, slight, yeah, I think that's largely and a little bit of the slight increase in the meal cost.
When we go through the process, we don't actually identify what revenue goes to offset which particular expense. We look at the total cost of the program, the total revenues that are generated by the program and the difference between the two is what we're calling subsidy. It's the amount that the town would have to take out of the general fund to pay for the remainder of the expenses of the program.
And in this case, it's salary, basically? Because I know the cost of the meals is going up a little bit, but the original cost of it still covers that. It still is less than what's currently being charged.
And I believe there was some, there was staff support last year, but it wasn't captured in this more comprehensive budgeting program, I'm suspecting.
And we went from having a home delivered meals coordinator who worked half-time to someone who's working three-quarter time?
I'm having trouble getting my hands around this, the idea of we're looking at subsidies to cover staff cost. I mean, are we doing this in other departments too? We're looking at the total cost of programs, so...
That is correct.
I mean, isn't part of government supplying services?
It is.
And I don't think we always look to having the community, you know, to have everything pay for itself. I mean, I even, you know, I looked up subsidy. I thought, okay, what is subsidy? And it's money granted by one state to another or a grant by government to a private person or company to assist an enterprise deemed advantageous to the public. And I guess that was what jumped out at me was advantageous to the public. So I, I don't know, I'm having trouble with subsidy.
Is there a better word for it?
And with people, you know, for our staff that supplies services to the town.
Cost to service. You're right. I mean, government is taking dollars from individuals and putting it where we feel our town folks see the most value. Obviously, when you get to providing some services, you, it's more typical to consider things, the cost of those items and the return on the investment. Parks and Recreation, for example, we will have in here or there are reports that show subsidy to different programs and this is just one of them. It's really just to understand the pure cost of the program versus the understanding of what we're getting back from it. But why I think it's, I'm trying to bring it to light, the change from where I think, where I know we understood we were in the prior budget window of last year is we understood this was not, this is a program that paid for itself last year and I just want to make sure it's clear that that's not the case this year. If we were to keep it where it's at, then that may be just fine, but it's also just, you know, trying to be transparent and making sure we understand what we're paying for and what we're getting and how much it costs. But that may not be the best word for it. The cost of a program. Councilmember Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to kind of get away from that part of it, the home delivered meal information for $7 per meal, which was something that the commission had said was palatable, for lack of a better word, the bottom line on that one, the worst bottom line, meaning that we don't get the United Way grant, is $40,905. Then the bottom line for the 850 is $33,646. So really, what we're really talking about, if we don't want to get, you know, tangled up with calling something a subsidy, is about $7,260 difference between the 850 and the 7. So if people could see themselves saying, okay, to the $7, we're only talking $7,200 between the difference between the 850 and the $7 and then we don't have to, you know, and I understand that, the hesitation with the word subsidy because, you know, when you have a, when you build a road, you're not subsidizing, you're not ever going to make money on that. So there's services and things that towns do that cost money. Some of them, you figure out if you want to do them or not. Sometimes you make that decision if you're making a little bit of money back on it. Sometimes you have to go ahead and do it if you're not making any money back on it. But regardless of that, if we're only talking the difference between what's acceptable to the senior, basically, the Senior Services Commission and who you represent is $7,200, I don't know if we have to really go in and keep arguing about some of this other stuff.
I do think, as we talk after this meeting, as the Senior Services Commission meets on Monday and talks some more, we'll have a better understanding of where we're at here. But I mean, if you, if a meal's cost $12, would we be comfortable going forward with that expense? I mean, they're not, we're fortunate that we get to leverage so many resources of volunteers. I mean, when I look at programs, when I look at which ones are best done in the private sector, who can deliver things more directly, more efficiently and so on and so forth, what's the role of government, all that goes into the dialogue. If others are not going to take care of the citizens, then government probably needs to step in and do that. And we've been doing a great job partnering with Senior Services and doing all these different things. But there is a cost. We have a limited budget, so that's why it's on the table. Obviously, like I said, we understand what the cost is now and there is an expense to it, but is it a great investment? It certainly is a great investment because we have the volunteers that are putting in thousands of hours every year in this program and allows us to leverage that to provide a great service to those folks that want to eat it and those folks that choose to order the food as well. But that's just home delivered meals. Does anybody want to talk specifically about home delivered meals?
No.
All right.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Legay?
Mary and Julie, what earlier I heard in your conversation that you wanted direction from us tonight, because I mean, we've had work study, after-work study, after-work study and we weren't making decisions at that point. So in terms of direction, how do you want that? Do you want us to make motions to put things in front of you or, I mean, I've made suggestions on two previous occasions and we're still having this conversation because those are work studies. So what do we have to do tonight to give you some explicit direction that is a consensus, perhaps, of this body so we can move off of this particular issue in that we have a 300-page budget in front of us? Not that this isn't important, it's one of the most important discussions we can have, that's why we've had it three or four times.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Legay, any way that you want to do it, if the staff is comfortable taking direction by acclamation, if the council members chime in sufficient numbers to give them a sense that they can come back with a specific part of the budget already in place, when you approved the tentative budget, I believe the 17th of June is the date?
Yep.
So between now and the 17th of June, the council, the staff is looking to lock down each one of those items. If they nod their head and say, okay, we understand where we're going on this one piece, you don't need to take a formal action. But if we have any time where we haven't heard from everybody sufficient to make that determination, then a formal motion is probably in order just to get some direction to the staff. But I don't know if that's necessarily what was intended for tonight.
I understand that, but I'd like to put this issue to bed, frankly, and move on. And I think I've stated in previous meetings that I was positioned to take the recommendations of the commission, whether we call it cost or subsidies, and basically say, move with the recommendations of the commission. And if I was to make a motion, my motion would be $7 for the home delivered meals and $15 for membership and...
Second. If she was the second, she was second.
Okay, so...
She was the second. Now we have a motion.
So is that a pseudo-second or a real second?
I think it was a real second. So are there enough heads nodding? I think if, yeah, if we were all to move in that direction, we probably all would be in favor of that.
Thank you for that, Mary, and I wasn't, my intention was not to be facetious, it was just to like get this thing addressed and move forward. So, and I thank the commissioners for all of the energy they put into this and their recommendations and language can be tricky sometimes and I'm glad that Vice Mayor mentioned the notion of subsidy because I haven't felt comfortable with that either, but in terms of financial terms, that term is used often and I understand that as well. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to indulge.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Legay. Vice Mayor Hanson?
Did Andrew just say we're adopting the tentative budget on the 17th and not the 3rd?
No, the 3rd, you're doing the maximum.
Yeah, maximum on the first meeting in June and the final on June.
The first is 17?
The 3rd is the...
The first meeting and the first council meeting, first Thursday.
And then you'll get your final on the 17th?
Let's ask our staff our schedule here.
Mayor, members of the council, we will be adopting the final budget on June 17th so that we will be setting the maximum expenditures, which is helpful to have this conversation because we now have to go back and adjust the budget. We'll have to adjust our revenues down, but, so that's why this conversation is helpful. We will be adopting the tentative budget, which, or I'm sorry, the maximum expenditure on June the 3rd, which is our next meeting.
Then the budget levy is not until August unless we have a July meeting?
Okay, they all clear? Thank you.
That would be kind of my next question. Since the budget we're looking at right now, we just got a week ago last Monday in its current form with all the changes and the organizational changes. I actually have eight pages of notes that, after going through the budget and so, my question was going to be, you know, how we maybe could move forward to maybe, and I don't mean go page by page, but maybe section by section rather than just jumping into a point, well, on page 200, I have this question, on page 300, I have this question. Maybe if we are a little more methodical about it and then would there be a possibility of just having an additional special session, maybe on the Tuesday before the 3rd when we adopt the tentative, where we could maybe do a little bit more of this process? We will have a new council member on board. It might give him a little bit more time to kind of weigh in on it. And if we did it in a special session as opposed to a work study, we could do exactly what Henry was talking about and making individual motions on any changes that we would want to make if that might be a possibility. And I know the council member-elect actually gets sworn in prior to the meeting on the 3rd, so he would be, he could be eligible to participate in the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, as soon as the election's canvassed and he takes the oath of office, he's, he'll be eligible for a meeting and that can happen anytime after the canvass.
I just thought that might be an opportunity to be a little bit more methodical going through it rather than, you know, kind of just jumping from topic to topic.
That would, we could consider that. We could also, since the first Thursday and next month will be the, just the maximum amount of our budget, we could also put another one perhaps in between that date and the day when we're expected to have a final budget. But as far as addressing your items, do you want to address some now or do you want to wait till then?
There's a number that I can certainly meet with Julie, those types of things. But then other ones that are like, well, what do you think of this idea type of thing?
Okay.
And so if we were going to maybe kind of go through it more methodically, I'd probably just wait for that since I'm doing, you know, on page 13, I have this, on page 27, I have this type of thing.
Okay, so would you want to wait until the next meeting to do that or do you want to do that? We're fine doing that this evening too. I think last meeting we had was open for everything and I just went through the funds and other people, like you said, just hit what they were most sensitive to, at least initially. I think we, you know, that's, we have some time tonight if you want, or maybe we can get started on some of the items.
Or I think it might help to be able to sit down with Julie first.
Okay.
Because I might be able to cut some of them out.
Okay, or if there's something you want to bring up tonight, feel free tonight if you want to get more opportunity for more dialogue and more feedback. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, the 3rd, if that is the day that, if, why can't we have a discussion that night? Because it might change the bottom line number or, I mean, why wouldn't that just be an agenda item that night?
At the council meeting? Regular meeting? No, certainly. So just our, coming out of that, we want to have a maximum amount.
Right, but I'm just saying, why would we want to have an extra meeting on the 2nd or something the day before or, in other words, why don't we just do it on the 3rd?
Let's keep that open. Was there another comment you had on the budget? No? For now? Yeah. Want to talk about process or budget?
Mayor, I just want to dovetail on Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Dickey's comment. I think the difficulty there is if we try to do that on the 3rd, we're making a bunch of changes on the fly and the group would have to then go back and adjust the budget. So we probably wouldn't know what the number was that evening in terms of setting a maximum or even setting a number because the number would more than likely change. I mean, if someone said, okay, let's throw 50 grand at this program and everyone nodded their head, you know, that could possibly increase the general fund and it could increase the number. And we've tried to do that before on the fly with the impact fees, doing the calculator and doing all that and that didn't quite work. I'm in favor of, you know, tackling as much of it we can tonight and then if there's a need to come back to it after Vice Mayor speaks with staff, then I'm also open to that as well. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilor Shamble, go for it.
With that then, community contracts. When we were talking about community contracts before, we had taken, I think Councilman Legay had suggested that we take the current numbers and reduce it 14%. One of the things, and we heard from Community Theater, we heard from Val Stasic, how, what they had gone through to come to their number, which was the only one that was reduced to $80,000. And with that, I thought that what, the fair thing to have done since we took the full amount from the other contracts is she did eliminate the program in the park, which was $25,000, which would actually have brought her budget in at 125 or her contract, I'm sorry, 105. So if you took 14% off of that, you'd actually come up with $90,300. So in the discussion that we had, I'd like to take that number up to $90,300 and put that in the form of a motion.
So, thank you. The, how are we ready to, do you want to include the 14% overall reduction on the other item?
Oh, that's right. We never put that into a motion, did we? So I'll move that, that we reduce the community, let's see, Community Theater's contract to 105 and then reduce, then take that number and everybody else's number, the whole number from last year and reduce it 14%. And I think, Mary, do you have those numbers?
Mayor, members of council, I have those numbers of what they would be.
So that's my motion.
What would they be?
Yeah, rattle them off.
I'm thinking, Mayor, our members of council, it would be $86,000 to the Boys and Girls Club, $129,000 to the tourism, $37,840 to the Extended Hands Food Bank and Councilmembers Arshambo...
$1,300.
$90,300 to the theater.
How much would tourism?
Mayor, Councilmember Continental Tourism would be $129,000.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
We don't have a second yet.
Yeah, how about a second?
Second.
All right, so Councilmember Arshambo, that reflects your motion? What was shared?
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Something we haven't taken into consideration is that the Boys and Girls Club, they did not have an automatic increase in the three-year term of the contracts. So if we look at that, the others all increased and they didn't. There's some other factors too. The, you know, the theater has a benefit, an additional benefit from the town through the building. I mean, and I think we need to kind of factor that in too, that for little or no rent, they're using the town building. So I think we need to look at the whole picture, you know, I think there's more factors here than just coming up with a, you know, like 14...
Anyway, they did.
But the rest of them, Chamber did.
Did it ramp up?
Mayor, I'm sure members of the council, my recollection, I didn't work on this contract, My recollection of the contracts is each one of them had a different amount each year, but it wasn't based on the same percentage overall. You know, the tourism, you know, had a $25,000, I think, increase per year. The Food Bank had a smaller one, obviously, but it wasn't a equal increase by each one, and it did not change the scope of work.
I think, I don't think it's going to be practical to drill down on it that much, although I think that would be the best way to do it. I think we've had good service from each one of our community contract partners thus far, and I think that what we received from, from our children, Boys and Girls Club, recently pointed out some things in deliverables, and also pointed out again that they did not have an increase, and they did not, I believe, at the time, when they went into the discussions in the contract initially, didn't understand that was really even an option. So I think that that's a valid point you made, Vice Mayor. I think we're getting good values from these, that's not a real issue. The real issue is the lack of funds we have to pay for services. And we're looking for these providers outside of the one reduction from the theater that's already been reflected in the cost. We're looking for them to do the same amount of work with less money. So with that in mind, I think it might be best to stick in the same frame of mind as Vice, I'm sorry, Councilmember Oshambo shared in his motion, but taking into account what Vice Mayor had shared, I'd be willing to consider an amendment on the Boys and Girls Councilmember, or Vice Mayor.
Could we maybe keep the caveat that as we do go through, if we do find any dollars elsewhere, that might be able to be moved over? That even if this went forward, it could be readdressed if we did find some money somewhere?
Councilmember Dickey, thank you.
Mayor, I just want to set the record straight, because there's some doubt about whether these were automatic increases. My understanding is that some of them weren't. And I don't know if we want to start talking about the building, because obviously the Boys and Girls Club was a school district building, so, and those seem to be kind of out of the scope of what we're talking about here. This town is looking, we're cutting everywhere. There's people who had jobs yesterday, don't have them today. There's people who had affordable health insurance yesterday, who don't have it today. So I think we all have to look a little bit, from a little bit of a higher level here. And some people aren't even willing to give an inch, others offer solutions that we can compromise on. So let's just keep all that in mind, too.
Good. Any other thoughts on this? We have a motion and a second for this item? Yes, Councilmember Leger.
I pretty much agree with the way in which we're moving, and we did have a very impressive email with a lot of facts and figures from the Boys and Girls Club that I just received, as you all had. So I feel comfortable moving with the motion, but at the same time, I would like to suggest that Vice Mayor, if she further deliberates this, perhaps comes up with a dollar amount that she wants to bring before us next time we have this discussion. I'm not sure if she'd be prepared to do that this evening or not. So I just wanted to state that as a caveat to what I probably will be voting on and approving, which is not to say that after further review, she could not come back with a specific number that's attributed to value of what is brought to us by the Boys and Girls Club, you know, whether it's $8,000 more, or five, or 10, or whatever the case is. So, thank you.
Good. Also, in light of the fact that we have made some progress here, and we've talked about these items, and had a committee work on it for a good period of time, we're making progress towards actually coming up with an answer for the budgetary process we're in. And this would be one more item we could set aside with a great deal more focus on all the other items, this is obviously an important one as well. I'd like to see us move forward on this this evening, and I don't think we're talking about, the things I've had to hear come up are going to be things that are going to be very difficult to measure, and I'm not sure they're real helpful in the end. So I'd like to just kind of move forward on it. So I'd like to, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, and look to keep the items that Councilmember Oshambo shared in his motion, and increase the Boys and Girls Club to $100,000, to maintain that level of funding.
A second?
All right. Process wise, what do we do here? Remind them, vote on the amendment? Okay. So we have the amendment is to have the Boys and Girls Club at the $100,000 where they've been over the last three years, without the increase. Discussion on amendment, thank you.
So the, so you're suggesting to keep them at the same level that they were at last year, and everybody else is taking 14% or thereabout?
Correct. And I think, I believe this is the, and maybe it's your point, Councilmember Dickey, the increases that have been coming from the other contracts were not included in the Boys and Girls Club contract. That's kind of how I'm reaching that level. Councilmember Brown.
I know exactly where you're coming from, Mayor, but I don't, I don't see the benefit of putting 14% back into, or raising the Boys and Girls Club back to 100,000. I don't think it's fair to the other organizations, the theater, or tourism, or the Food Bank. I think we need, I think we need to do a cut across the board, just as we're doing with so many things in this entire town. So I probably won't be able to support that Boys and Girls Club going back to 100,000.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this, and we'll call for yea or nay on the amendment? All right, all in favor of the amendment, indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
All right.
We'll call.
Yeah, we'll call, thanks, I'm not sure how that one turned out. On the amendment?
Aye. Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Nay.
Councilmember Leger?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Oshambo?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dickey?
Nay.
Mayor four, three.
All right, thank you. Now into the main motion, to, which included the amounts that Councilmember Oshambo included with the change to the, and the amendment changed the Boys and Girls Club amount. Any other discussion on the main motion? All right, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Mayor six, one.
All right, thank you, guys. Moving on to other items in the budget. What stands out, or what would you like to dive into? Happy to go through page by page, or section by section, if you wish? Councilmember Dickey.
Kind of easy, I think. It's actually, it's not a money thing, it's a language thing. Page, 145, 146 are parts of the law enforcement, kind of mission statement and things like that. I think there was, there might have been a typo on the bottom, on the last sentence of the middle department description, so I just wanted to mention that part. And then I sent some information to Julie, but to Captain Kleinheinz and Sergeant, and Brian, and it was basically just about some language that was in the draft budget that I liked. And so I believe they're going to look at trying to put some of that back in, because I talked to Captain Kleinheinz there, so those will be some changes. One of them has to do with the reference to ASPOST that was in the draft budget, which said that the all sworn personnel will meet, exceed, and stay current with state training standards set by ASPOST as a means of reducing liability. And I would ask that that might be put back in, because it's kind of relevant even from yesterday on Horizon, Lionel Mann is the ED of ASPOST, who are, they're the Arizona Peace Officer Standards and Training Board. And so they are actually actively working on their standards now, and in light of Senate Bill 1070, it's become something that the governor and other people are putting a lot of focus on. I think it's a good idea for us to have that in there, so I did ask them to do that. And then another thing, which is just kind of, I guess, a kudos, which is one of the objects that we're going to be looking at, is to decrease the number of false alarm calls through citizen education. And Andrew, through your other mayor and your other council, and Avondale are actually actively doing that, too, and this is a bigger municipality, they're saving more money in that, but they're actually going to save, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in that. So I hope that we, and I'm glad that we decided to do that. So those are just a couple of things, and they're not really money related, but I just wanted to make sure, and I think that you both got that email, and maybe when we do see the final page here, we'll see some of that in there. Thanks.
All right, that related to the first item, the AZ post, is there any feedback from our law enforcement on that? At this time, is there any reason to consider that they, that may not be something we can understand why, perhaps, but why that wouldn't be agreeable, or a challenge?
No, I don't know. It was, I believe it was in the original book that we got from this year, so it's not like I'm taking it from last year.
Okay.
So, but I just think it's, it might be a good time to put that and have that stand.
And thank you to those that served on the, on that committee to work on that as well. Appreciate it. Councilmember Leger.
Mayor, I just have a few general questions I'd like to address to the mayor or Julie. In our last workshop discussion, we had talked about that 4.5 million in capital with respect to SOWO, so that, I'm just going to affirm, that will be removed from the capital budget, which will lower our total budget from about 38 million down to 34.5 or something, as I'm seeing some heads now there. Also, an adjustment on one of our financial policies was recommended last time around, which was taking 50%, moving that into capital. When will we be seeing that resolution?
Mayor, Councilmember Leger, that is actually scheduled for the June 17th meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you. And one other question in that regard, the resolution with respect to increasing bed tax, 17th as well?
June 17th, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I'm not sure how you'd like to proceed. I, as Vice Mayor, have marked up a number of pages, and did you want to start moving through some of these pages?
I do. Yeah, let's give it the-
And I'm going to start right in the front with the operational budget on page 87, so if anyone else wants to chime in, that would be great. I'm going to move up to the economic development budget, which is on page 105 and on page I would just like some more detail, basically, so if Ms. Gary could, Mayor, address that, that would be helpful. I'm not necessarily questioning the expenditures, I want to understand expenditures more, so...
Laurie, am I coming up? Thank you.
I'm looking at page 105 in the budget.
Mayor and Councilmember Leger, is there a particular item that you'd like them to address?
There's several, so let me just kind of go through those as I look at my notes here. Marketing pieces in factbook folders, for my benefit, as well as the benefit of the public, because that appears in both the general fund, as well as excise tax, without, you know, a thesis on it, just a little more detail on what we're paying for there. Marketing pieces in factbook folders.
Yes. Mayor Shlom and members of the council, at present, we, at present, we don't have any marketing pieces that are targeted specifically to some industries that we'd like to, we'd like to address. And let me just give you, and I'm not articulating that very well this evening, but let me give you an example. One of the things that we are doing is we're doing some outreach to the retail industry. And in order for us to have a strong case, what is our value proposition to that particular industry segment, and I believe we do have some value proposition to be shared with them, one of the things we need is a targeted marketing piece aimed directly at that particular segment. And that was one of the purposes of our retail trade area analysis study, is to help us define what industry segments that we want to target. And we have that, we absolutely have that study, and now we need to address some targeted marketing pieces to that, for example.
Okay.
That's one of the examples that would be in that particular budget item.
So when you talk about factbook folders, that would be basically sending marketing material to a prospective client with facts and figures about the town, and-
Yes, sir.
Kind of selling our case.
Yes.
Thank you for that. And I'm moving down to the next to last bullet, it says advertising. Could you, could you help me understand what you would be targeting there?
Yes, there's a couple of different advertising that we would be targeting, and one of them is to the retail industry. And not only do we need some marketing pieces that we need to develop and print, and then push out to very specific industry segments in the retail sector, but there's also some opportunities for us to advertise and directly target the industry, the retail industry. And so I'm not necessarily talking about, although it could include publications, but there's some opportunities for us to target some e-newsletters. There's some opportunities for us to go to trade shows, and particularly do some advertising at those particular trade shows. We, there's some advertising prior to going to the trade shows that we can do, to the industries that are going to be there, and advertising at those particular trade shows. So that is one industry segment. The other industry segment is the advanced medical industry segment, and that would also include the same advertising opportunities for us.
Thank you. And a follow-up to that, you mentioned trade shows, which kind of goes to my next question. And I'm looking at bullet point number three, and these costs appear in both the general fund and the excise tax budget, as you all know. It talks about conferences and meetings, and I guess what I wanted to clarify, when I was looking at conferences and meetings, I clearly understand what conferences and meetings are. Where do trade shows fit? Do trade shows fit under the umbrella of conferences?
I believe that's where I have put them, but I can clarify that in the detailed, in the detailed budget.
It's not mentioned anyplace else, and in that you mentioned it in your discussion regarding advertising, I, it would be important for me to know whether that's part of advertising, or if that's part of conferences, because once again, you know, conferences and meetings, you know, we have a pretty good price tag there. And if you don't have that information on the fly, that's fine, we'll have an opportunity to discuss this again, but that would be-
I will. I will, I will look at my detailed budget and let you know where we put that in.
If you could just let the council know, that would be helpful. Now, moving over to page 106, once again, this is the economic development cost center and costs that are paid for through the excise tax. I know in working with BVAC over the last couple of years, the Business Vitality Advisory Council, there's been a lot of discussion about enhancing our signage, not only on Shea Boulevard, but on 87, 101, 202, et cetera. Which is interesting when you think about it, that we don't have any market in the Scottsdale area that point in the direction of Fountain Hills. So with that being said, I'm looking at, let's see here, the... All righty. Marketing pieces in factbook folders. Once again, you explained that in your previous discussion. So that's just more of that?
That is, that is. And the marketing pieces and the advertising, quite frankly, we have an offshore budget in that compared to other municipalities who are outreach and targeting that particular industry segment. But we've done the best we could in terms of keeping our costs down and being very specific on what we want to target.
And I understand that. And the rationale for the excise, having an excise tax, is this, is this more marketing with respect to downtown and the SWABAC plan? Have you delineated your costs in that manner?
It will be, that will certainly be included in the marketing and outreach pieces. Because quite frankly, we don't care where they come into Fountain Hills as long as they come into Fountain Hills. So if we have an opportunity to bring them, to bring retailers, for example, into the downtown area, we certainly want to articulate that there are opportunities in the downtown area for them to locate.
One additional question. I appreciate your responses. You have, it's bullet point 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. It says signage. And then down a few more bullet points, you have highway signage. I was trying to distinguish between those two line items, what they were, what the differences were, what signage we were targeting.
The highway signage is the signage on the Loop 101 and the 87. Those are the directional signage to direct people to Fountain Hills. That is the 11,300.
Very good.
And the advertising and signage, actually, that is, that should be advertising. It is, it is, it is advertising if not signage. But that is the name of the account that we put it under.
Okay, very good. That helps clarify that. It's one of those CPA accounting things, right? It makes absolutely no sense, but it's there. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Well, I have a few more questions, but I'll defer at this point. My peers have any other questions?
Anything else someone wants to hit on right now or clarify? Those are good. I think the highway signage is another good example, that 11,300. Another great example of volunteers stepping up and helping from years, a couple of years back almost now, working with ADOT and identifying signage not included in this. There's some free, the costs are free signs. I know Tom, you're familiar with it, and Laura, you're familiar with it, and many other volunteers are familiar with it. And Jerry Butler of late, working to get some good costs on signage to go up along the highways. But working with ADOT and just asking the question is going to get us, it appears, some good signage that we're going to leverage the improvements on, at least the Loop 202, where they have to replace some signs anyways to start getting Fountain Hills a little more recognition. And then we'll have to work on getting them, once they're off the exit, going in the right direction. So much appreciated. Again, more volunteers helping to push those things forward. Vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be helpful in this particular budget if there could be maybe just in, you know, parentheses, what the full total is of the cost. Because like under consultant services, you know, under the excise tax fund is $30,000. But then there's also some consultant fees in the general fund. And it's the same through all of them. So like in the advertising and signage, it's really, the total is really 51,250. And the conferences, you know, 14,280. And I just think that's helpful to display what the full costs are once you combine the two funds.
Oh, I see. To add the excise and the, and the operating general fund together?
I got you.
And Laurie, maybe just a little bit more on the consulting services?
Is that that same page, 106?
Mm-hmm.
Third button down, bullet down?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The consulting services, we put in there to, let me see. Excuse me for just a minute. The consulting services, what account number is that under? That, part of that is the professional, is that under the professional fees line item? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, just want to clarify because I have a little bit different. It's a little bit different under mine that I, that I turned in to what you all are looking at. So I apologize. Part of that is for the downtown parking study. As you know, in the SWABAC or the Downtown Vision Plan, one of the challenges that we continue to talk about is parking. Do we have enough parking if we want to move forward with some of that plan? And so the, we put money in there to do a parking plan. The other part of that is a skill set survey in terms of if we were to do some targeted industries and they need particular skill sets and labors, labor force and particular skill sets, and what do we have in our labor market? For example, if we were to target the advanced medical industry, what type of skill sets do we have in our labor market to attract those sort of businesses? And just as a little bit, I talked, I touched on this a little bit previously. Our labor shed is much, much larger than the town of Fountain Hills. And so if we, when we take a look at the travel time, the average travel time one way to work and from work in Maricopa County, it's approximately 29 minutes. So if we took 29 minutes and we took a look at what our true labor shed is in a 29-minute commute, that puts us a lot, it lets our labor pool, our labor pool then is much, much larger than just the town limits. And so that gives us a labor pool of almost 200,000 people. And because when we're taking the commute times. And so it's to take a look at the skill sets within that labor shed and take a look at what industry sectors we could better attract. The other thing in the professional fees are for design services for some of our marketing pieces. And so that goes into that particular professional fees also.
All right. Any more items on business development or economic development this time?
All right. One additional question. I'll direct it to one of our finance folks. Page 106, it talks about a transfer to the capital fund for downtown greening project. And that's somewhat confusing in that we thought that was a volunteer fundraising program, yet we account for that in our budget. Can we explain the rationale for that, please? It almost appears as if we're spending an additional sum of money for the greening project.
These are the, there are three projects in the downtown section of the capital project. This transfer represents two of the three projects.
Okay.
The third project is the volunteer project.
Okay. And that's accounted for in capital projects, our capital projects area. What is that, like 250,000 or something?
That is correct.
And the rationale for having that in there is just, it's just one of those accounting issues in terms of having to account for it even though it's money coming in from outside? Is that, is that... Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me. Mayor, thank you.
Vice mayor.
Thank you. While we're on the economic development page, it kind of brings up something that has, the way it appears in the budget, some places it refers to that fund as the downtown fund. In other places, it's the economic development fund. And they're all talking about the same thing. And we might want to get to a consistency discussion on what, you know, instead of, because it does make it sound like we've got two different things going on when they're really, it's one thing.
Do we recall what it was called on the, when we, when the council approved this?
When it was approved, it was called the downtown, downtown development.
Okay.
And some of the things listed at that time were like the linear mall. That was part of the discussion at that time.
And also the...
And street sidewalk, street improvements. That was one of the things listed.
The redo of the avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So will our accounting system work that way where we can start just calling it, since what it was called when we put in the 1/10th, 1% to go towards downtown?
Yes, Mayor Schlemm, members of the council, we can call it the downtown fund. We sort of use downtown fund and economic development fund interchangeably. But we can allocate that that specific fund is called the downtown fund.
Or the economic... I would just call it however we, the council, I would just say, suggest it is the way that council initiated the increased sales tax, whatever it was called.
Mayor Schlemm, I believe it was called the downtown fund. The excise tax was dedicated for downtown economic development.
I've got the minutes here.
Okay. Councilmember, her vice mayor has the minutes, so she can, whatever, I would say whatever it's, it was called in the minutes.
Whatever she said is what we'll do.
Calling it whatever it was called. Understanding that obviously the downtown, we're looking at economic development in downtown, which would mean improvements and whatever else. All right. Councilmember Ashamba, did you have your hand up at a moment there?
No, sir.
All right. I want to point out, what is the reduction in our council budget?
One member.
One member. What is, yeah, what is Mike saving us by him going off? We've got a dramatic reduction in our council budget to go along with the rest of our community reductions. But no, you don't need to go to that page. Just to point out. Council's budget's been reduced dramatically as well.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Dickie?
There was something in the paper either last week or this week about salary cuts and raises and things like that. And I just wanted to clarify and make sure now, you know, we made our personnel changes and things like that, but there haven't been salary cuts, but you have not brought forward any cost of living increases or anything for anybody, including directors. So I wanted to, so there were no COLA raises or merit raises and also no salary cuts, directors or any staff? Is that correct?
Mayor Schlemm, Councilmember Dickie, it is correct with the exception of the judge. The judge has a contract with an automatic increase in it. But this is the second year in a row that we, there's no increases program for any staff.
Even directors?
Even directors. It's only the judge because he has a contract.
And we can't touch that contract even if he wanted to because it is what it is. But I also understand that our judge being such a community-minded gentleman has contributed his raise towards community organizations in a donation. So he's very sensitive, obviously. He's a team player with the rest of the community. He's foregone, in essence, his raise as well, even though he can't forego it. He's donated it.
And I imagine it because of the letter and just to make, to make it clear that that's true.
Okay. Thank you. And so the language for the 1/10th, 1% is downtown development? Thanks. Right. And obviously, even items where we've addressed tonight, we can come back to clarify over the next several meetings we have as well. So don't feel like you, if you miss something tonight related to any of the departments we touch on, that you can't come back to them. Do you have anything? Town manager, Davis. Would you just generally go over the performance, the performance measures and the purpose of the performance measures that you now have here in our budget? I know we talked about it briefly the last meeting. We picked out a couple of items to ensure that we are clear on them. But performance measures are where you look at each department and have some actual measurements, which I know is big and good to great. But I thought maybe you could go over that briefly for us again.
Mayor, council, would you like me to just to address the concept and the principle of using performance measures? Performance measures, again, as I, I see it in our work study, represent the gauges on the dash of our, the services that we provide. They are to be viewed in both the sense of providing us an opportunity to compare our performance with national, state, regional, local performance of other jurisdictions, but also in a way should be viewed as a mechanism by which we can identify early problems that are occurring as we see trends. These trends can relate to the costs being expended or related to the services we're providing. But they can also indicate to us there are also revenue issues that come up that may give us some early warning with regard to how well we're going to be able to provide those services in the future. Ratios are generally the way that we communicate. We utilize performance measures. Costs per lane mile maintenance, streets swept, per capita expenditures for law enforcement, services, fire protection, et cetera, are examples of some of those performance measures. The concept is that which is not measured is, we don't realize progress. We need to measure. It allows us also to identify, for your consideration, future goals or initiatives to improve those performance measures as well.
And I think, I think I most appreciated the supplemental book you gave us after you gave us your, our homework assignment when you first got here boldly. Homework of good to great. And then you gave us supplement for the social sectors, which is an interesting thing. Some areas within town government and other organizations, volunteer groups, churches, you name it, might have more difficulty measuring outputs. But that book clearly talked about the importance of measuring even items in the social sectors, which is helpful.
And you bring up a good point, Mayor. Another reason for utilizing performance measures is for us to identify success as well. And the concept of good to great, measuring success is very important as we try to turn the flywheel and engender trust on the part of our constituents so that they may know also what we've been able to accomplish through those performance measures.
I think that's great. I mean, you've got every department broken out here, some multiple levels. And it's great to see the performance measures included in those. Good, Councilmember Dickie?
Mayor, thank you. Tom, I don't know enough to see if this reflects the decision to not go forward for the bond on Suoro until November of 11. So was there anything that had to be changed in the capital improvements because of the fact that it would not be fixed, obviously, in a longer period of time? Because I don't know enough about what we saw earlier to appear to know if any of that had changed. Did that decision change anything for how we will maintain that road?
Mayor, members of the council, the question is, if you're not doing the four and a half million, are you doing something else? Is that the question?
Yeah. Like when we made that decision to wait so long, did that change anything that you felt you would have to do in the next year?
All meaning, patching and additional maintenance to hold up the road for that year?
Yeah. Because I don't know the technical terms for what you would have been doing anyway as opposed to what you think you might have to do since we're not doing the bond.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe we're doing anything if we're not doing that. We're waiting because we feel that that's just another Band-Aid that's going to take more money. And we don't have that money to spend right now. And so we're just, we're just holding off.
So you're not expecting, at least you're hoping that there, because we're not going to be redoing Suoro until 2012, this fiscal year, we are just going to continue to budget what you have in here today to patch and get by until the following fiscal year? Thanks, Mayor. Okay. Okay.
It would just be filling potholes or?
Mm-hmm. Well, it's, um, it's an interesting conversation that we've had throughout this budget tonight, especially because of how we started, and we talked about role of, role of government, which is kind of the question of the hour, really. Infrastructure, you know, if you just kind of peel everything away, you have infrastructure, you have public safety. I regret that we're not going forward with this. I feel that not only just for the condition of the road, but for the downtown, the ability to solve that intersection problem, for lack of a better word, and I, and I wish that we were able to go ahead with that. And since we're talking about roads, I just wanted to say something about the, there was another full-page ad in about the garbage, and the reason I'm mentioning it is because once again, it has my husband's former work phone number on there for people to call, and we just got an email today from somebody who obviously feels that the roads would be in better condition if we didn't have as many heavy trucks, but I just wanted to be able to say publicly that if you're trying to call, that, that's not going to work for you, so I just wanted to say that, I want to talk about roads.
All right. Is there no forwarding? Tom, anything you wanted to add, basically, now that you're up here, basically, anything you've heard?
Um, I, Mayor, I guess the only thing is that I keep getting asked, you know, will the road last that long, and, and I keep saying that that's up to mother nature, and it's, you know, it could get much worse, but it could hold on. So we hope that that's the case, and we can hold on, and we can come along with the bonds, and I think that the timeframe is such that we will definitely be able to do a great job at public outreach and education and convince the voters that this is the right thing to do.
I think related to that, that much of what I heard the last time we more or less cemented our timing on that was, uh, the planning was going to take longer, the design's going to take longer, and then we wouldn't be ready quite for the election. So I think it's not a lack of desire as much as the practicality of getting it on the ballot, so.
You're correct.
And also the timing of, you know, downtown, we want to make sure we're not redoing things that we've already improved. Who was first, Councilmember Legere or Ashambo? Ashambo?
I was.
Do you have priority?
Thank you. Um, if I could move to the fire contract or the fire budget on page, let's see, page what it's in there, 155. I thought I read somewhere that Rural Metro was wanting to step up and not take their three percent increase this year, does that budget reflect that?
Yes, Mayor, council, that, that cost is built in, it's figures.
Um, it's still reflecting with the overall percentage.
So it's something that, that will, but that is something that been made, as the chief calls it, a done deal. Uh, so we're happy with that, and that figure is going to amount to about eighty-five thousand dollars, taking that neighborhood, so.
I wanted to bring that up specifically because I wanted to point out the efforts, the extraordinary efforts that Chief Legreca and Randy Roberts and the town manager and the mayor, you have gone through in working on this particular budget and turning every stone over, and, you know, again, I just want to, I want to extend my appreciation of the fact that everybody's pitching in, and Scott, thank you.
No, I mean, we've been well-protected by our fire and police, so, and we haven't seen these, haven't seen increases over the last several years, we've been real fortunate, and we have obviously great partners that help us to save dollars particularly at this time, so, most, most appreciated. Um, thanks for pointing that out. So would that ultimately be reflected in here? Okay, well, thank you.
Please, please, here's a moment, it's going to be that.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else, anything else in either the general or the capital? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor?
I'll just, this is easier. Maybe in going forward, what would answer a lot of small questions quickly is looking at these sheets, you know, with all the line items and everything, and it's where there's places where there's like a significant fluctuation, like maybe where something goes to zero, or, you know, it goes way up or way down, or just a little blurb, like at the bottom of the page, a little footnote explaining that, that would probably cut out a number of questions.
Didn't we have, thank you, Council Vice Mayor, I think, didn't we have some things that were highlighted or, or the changes, because I think that came up last year? Did we reflect that somewhere else, or is it only on some of the, some of the pages?
In the fees that were highlighted.
The fees, that's where it was. But in the other areas as well would be helpful, particularly now that we've had year-over-year same-budget program.
We will attempt to do that. We tried to use the budget highlights to point out some of the areas where numbers might have significantly changed, but I can also make a note at the bottom of the detailed budget pages so that it stands out on the same page.
Like, I want to, what page do you have there, for an example, on some of those?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. I'll just look at that and make sure we know it.
Click under landscape permit, please. Oh-nine, ten, it was ten thousand four hundred, and then ten-eleven, it's down to zero, which is nice, and it's probably just a very simple explanation. And the same thing, planning and zoning fees was zero last year, and this year it's fifteen thousand. Leases and rents kind of doubled this year, so it's just kind of curiosity almost, you know, where, what we're changing.
But in writing, rather than?
Yeah, because otherwise you're flipping back and forth, and, you know, if it makes reference to it in the highlights, then you, you try and go back later on, and it's easier if it's on the same page.
Yeah, I think more of it would be the curiosity factor on a lot of those items. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, I don't know if somebody already asked this, but is the increase in the bed tax anywhere in here yet? In the, on page forty-nine or anything?
I think the only place that you're seeing it is an increase in the excise fees.
Because it's all mixed up with the local, but is it, but is that, if it went up?
Oh, does it mean local sales tax?
Okay. Thank you.
Just, just a comment here regarding, I think, the question that Councilwoman Dickey asked a bit ago, in the event that, Tom, we don't do Saguaro Boulevard, are there any project dollars budgeted for some type of emergency situation? And in the budget, there is money on page one-twenty-one for minor road repairs, and I would imagine that would extend to Saguaro Boulevard in the event that there were issues with Saguaro Boulevard, and also in our summary sheet for expenditures, there's a hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars in there for contingency for capital, uh, so that's a capital contingency fund that, worst-case scenario, I would look at both of those numbers as a safety net. Um, so it's just, just an observation from, from the budget, so I think, I think there's a safety net there, is my conclusion, yeah.
Councilmember Dickey?
Um, Mayor, are we giving direction, if some of the things that we talk about do require extra funding, are we saying that they can go and look at that kind of thing? The contingencies or the rainy day fund or something like that?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, as we go on, and we added some money tonight to a couple of items, and we may do that some more, are we telling them when they go back to try to find that for us, are they able to look at the contingency fees or the rainy day fund?
Well, there, yeah, I think maybe you could explain, Julie, there are limits to what those can be considered for.
Um, yes, Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, we're hearing everything that the council's saying as far as making changes and adjustments to the budget. We do have some contingency money in the general fund for those types of things. We, the staff would not obviously recommend rainy day funds because those would be for emergencies, not for operating, but we have contingency funds in there, and if we got to the point where we used them all up, we would probably come back to the council with that.
So, do, would the rainy day funds need to be budgeted here, or is there a different process to utilize those, should they be needed in this next fiscal year?
Um, Mayor Shlom, members of council, the rainy day funds are appropriated in the way that they're designed to be used if you have a real shortfall in revenues. So in other words, we have an appropriation for revenues, if that's short by a million dollars or five hundred thousand dollars, we would be able to, we'd have to come back to the council, and it would take a supermajority, but we would come back to the council and authorize that appropriation to transfer over to the general fund.
So it's the, the lack of revenue is when it would-
Correct.
And Mayor, Julie, what you've heard so far, and I don't know if it's going to change a lot between now and next time, but have you a feel for your ability to cover some of the things that have changed without either doing that, or you had mentioned something about that this council had the authority to change and use capital funds if we wanted to? That's not one of those things that the state of Arizona tells us what to do, it's just something that we wanted to do or that is, is under our jurisdiction, so are you comfortable so far thinking that what we've talked about will be covered or able to be covered, you know, with these tools?
Um, Mayor Shlom, Councilmember Dickey, yes, we are. We're keeping track of everything that the council is making recommendations for, and we're still within a good range.
Okay, thank you.
Good. And I think reflecting back on what council, our Vice Mayor Hanson had shared, maybe the next, our next meeting on the budget will, if you look at page eighty-one, we'll just go through the operating budget by item by item, and then see if folks have additional items to add to each of those sections, and then do the same with the capital improvement projects. I don't know if we want to go through every program number, but we can perhaps address the capital improvement projects kind of more broadly, see if folks, council members have comments on those specifically. So I'm not sure if that takes any additional preparation, but also, as council members do, the best thing to do as council members is to work with the staff directly and, and ask all the crazy questions one-on-one, and also ask for clarification, because the worst thing is to, to not know what you don't know yet, or you think you know, but you may not know what it is, so that's what that time with the staff is good, good for, particularly related to this budget this year. Is that kind of the process you'd like to also consider, just go through the operating budget in particular? Good. Vice Mayor?
This has been a curiosity question, though. What is internal service charges?
Adrian.
Well, they're under-
It's all over.
They're everywhere.
It's all over.
In the past, we've used the operating support division to house what are typically shared services throughout town departments, so things like mail service, postage, photocopy use, um, anything that would be a shared service was housed in one department, but in, in the, the goal of trying to make programs reflect their true cost, the internal service funds are now charging departments for their postage or charging departments for their use of photocopy supplies and materials.
Some departments get off easy, some departments get hit pretty hard.
Do they?
We use a lot of copies.
The finance department does a lot of mailings, we pay for a lot of postage next year.
And that was another thing, there, there was another line item that appeared in, in a number of the budgets, and that was the, for the vehicle replacement program. How long have we been doing that?
The vehicle replacement program, this is the second year of the program, and this year we've expanded it so that it includes both vehicle and equipment replacement. So rather than deal with, as we have in the past, having to face the fact that in a particular budget year, we now have three vehicles to replace, and we have to come up with significant amounts of money with no planning, we now set aside what's equivalent to depreciation every year for the vehicles that we do have in our fleet, and that money is then set aside to provide funding for future replacement of vehicles and equipment.
And in this type of a budget year, if we were looking for a few dollars, could we forego deducting that from the budgets as a way of coming up with a few additional dollars?
Yes.
And in fact, I know Chief Legreca again, because of the, I mean, he pointed out the, because of the degree of maintenance and care that the, his equipment's been receiving, he's going to, he's going to be able to help out with extending it at least another year on some of the vehicles, I suspect. So hopefully we can apply that to other vehicles.
Well, and that was another thing, too, with, with our existing fleet, we have fewer employees, do we have extra vehicles now at this point that we might consider?
I know we've definitely reduced the fleet, I don't know if it'd be Tom or Mary, speak to that one? Or Tom?
Um, Mayor, council members, I maintain the vehicle replacement program, so it's basically, we look at what vehicles are going to be maintained in the fleet, so because we've downsized, downsized the fleet for next year, those, those vehicles that were taken out of service because they're no longer needed are no longer scheduled for replacement. And so, number one, it's going to extend the life of how we have to replace existing vehicles, because those vehicles will come into the fleet to replace older vehicles, and so it, it's made the vehicle replacement program of longer duration, so vehicles that we might have replaced because of the turns in the replacement program, in ten years, we might now have the ability to hold on to for twelve years. And so we scale back the charges to reflect that.
So we're just storing some of the vehicles?
And, and looking for which ones we take to auction each year.
Money?
Yep, it is. All right. Anything else tonight?
Mayor, just a point of clarification, could, Julie and Mayor, could you review what our budget schedule looks like going forward? Because we've had some suggestions for some changes, I'm not sure if we're adopting that, or adding an extra session, or where we're at. I, I understand what we're doing on, at our first meeting in June and our second meeting in June, maybe the question is, are we adding this special session that we had discussed? We talked about it, I'm not sure that went anywhere.
Well, just if, yeah, maybe you would just clarify what we have scheduled.
It, it appeared that the council consensus was to take the first meeting in June and to extend it so that that meeting would encompass the additional meeting that we were talking about potentially having following the June second meeting. So at this point, I'm assuming that we're having an extended June second meeting that would set the maximum amount of the budget, but continue the discussion?
So what are all the budget-related meetings that are coming up? Do you have the schedule? I thought you had that. There's a, was there one more open house?
There are two, two additional council meetings, there's not an additional urban house.
Our first meeting in?
In June to set the maximum amount, the second meeting to adopt the final budget.
Okay. And the sec, first meeting in June will have some additional dialogue to make sure we cover everything, so folks are comfortable. Obviously, at the end of that, we can see how we feel as well, but currently scheduled is first Thursday and the third Thursday. Good. Is that what you had? Vice Mayor?
I thought the Vice Mayor had asked for a meeting on, on the first, on Monday the first, or?
Tuesday.
Tu, Tuesday the first, yes. Before the third.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going, I thought it was a special session, because once again, if we're having this discussion on the third- not sure, but that's the question I'm trying to get answered.
I would like to see that happen.
Yeah, so I think what the, the challenge is by doing that is that when you come to the third, we may not have everything buttoned down from having a meeting two days earlier. I would just prefer maybe extending our meeting on the third, or if we have to throw another meeting in next the week following that and have another meeting the second Thursday or whatever date is convenient.
Our attorney has a suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that we have anything scheduled yet for the June work study that follows that next Tuesday. It's a fairly regularly scheduled meeting. You could just schedule that as a special meeting depending upon what happens on the Thursday prior to it.
There you go. Okay, so should we put that as a placeholder? Yeah. Be the second Tuesday or the Tuesday following our Thursday, first Thursday of the month meeting.
And that is helpful for newly elected people.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and I think you're right. We could have a council member, Elkie, here on that prior Tuesday, but for sure on the following Tuesday. He'll be here up the first Thursday as well.
Thank you, Andrew.
Good. Is that okay? Is that good? Very good. Yep. Definitely want to make sure we have plenty of time for dialogue and consultation. All right. Are we ready to go to the next budget item or the next agenda item? Or would you have additional discussion on the budget? Thank you. We do not need a motion or anything further, do we, on this item? Okay. Good. I'll go to item number 10. Consideration of a contract with Parsons Brinckerhoff in the amount of $112,285 for the design of the Shea Gap project, including incorporating the Shea Bike Lane and Median project. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item on your agenda is to a contract with Parsons Brinckerhoff for the design of Shea Gap project. It's an overlay project and it includes the Shea Bike Lane and Median project. And the contract cost is $112,000. We're in this situation because we received excellent bids on the Shea Climbing Lane project, and because of that, we are able to deobligate the stimulus, the R.A. portion of those, the funds for that project and are able to commit that to a different project. In addition to that, we have a bike lane on the south side of Shea and a Median project, which was previously bid by ADOT and has been sitting around on the shelf for the last couple of years. So we're able to, at this time, package those two things together and do them as a new project. Parsons Brinckerhoff is, in addition to being a nationally recognized firm, is designated as ADOT's East Valley Management Consultant for R.A. projects, which would give them more control and familiarity with the ADOT process. And they have indicated that they can meet the, a very tight time schedule that'll be required on these projects. We will have to have the project designed and ready to bid by August 15th. If you look at the board up there, you will see our grant projects on Shea Boulevard. What we're talking about tonight consists of the blue, the Shea Bike Lane and Median project, and the yellow, which is the Shea Gap overlay project on the north side. We currently have $1.6 million in funds between R.A. funds, S.T.P. funds for the Bike Lane and Median, and town funds which were deposited a number of years ago at ADOT. So staff does recommend approval of this contract with Parsons, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's first look for a motion on this item. Let me find it here.
Mayor?
Councilmember.
Move, sorry about that. Move to approve the design contract with Parsons Brinckerhoff for the design of the Shea Gap project, including incorporating the Shea Median and Bike Lane project for $112,285.
Second, all right. Anyone from the public on this item? All right. Questions, discussion from council? Randy, would you go back and explain the funding, how we ended up with funding to consider a different project? We had 3 million or so budgeted for the climbing hill, the climbing lane, correct? And most of that was stimulus dollars, and so what had happened?
Yes, Mayor, and Council. We had about $3.4 million that was in the IGA with ADOT last fall that the council approved. Bids came in as a whole lot of construction bids are coming in this time, the economy, much less than that. And so we are in a position that in addition to the construction of that project, which is currently ongoing, there's enough funding left over that we can deobligate the entire portion of the stimulus funds that were allocated to that. It's about $1.1 million.
All right. And so the gap, is it going to completely, at least on the westbound side, completely connect from where the stimulus dollar project will end there near Fountain Hills Boulevard? And how far to the south will it go?
Yes, Mayor and Council. On the board up there, you can see in blue, in light blue, the Shea Climbing Lane project, which is the project that's currently under construction on the north side of Shea, mostly between Fountain Hills Boulevard and Palisades. You can see in red on the east end, the Shea and Suoro improvements, which are currently under design and are at the 60% level right now. And that will include an overlay of the westbound lanes there, too, as well as widening. And then the Shea Gap project is in the middle, and that's what the contract with Parsons includes, and that's spanning from end to end of those two projects. That'll cover everything in between them.
Sorry, is this, Randy, is this roughly the Belara development or is it technology? How far?
It's between Belara and technology.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. And so this Gap project would get us in the Median, get us off of the dirt Median we have now and the soft shoulder, in essence, that we have?
Yes, Mayor. We have two sections that we have a dirt Median right now. This will put curbs in them and landscape them, as well as it will provide the bike lane on the south side. You know, as you may have noticed, the edge of pavement, you know, the edge stripe of the pavement is the edge of the pavement. And so if you happen to run off the pavement there, you're in the dirt. So not only is that not suitable for bicycles, but it's really, will be much safer to have a paved shoulder area there on the south side. So this project includes both of those two things.
All right. Thank you. That helps. And the Median would be more or less the no water or low water irrigation so we can keep our maintenance costs down and...
Mayor, it'd be a drip system similar to most of our other medians.
All right. All right. And we haven't been assured that we're going to get this money deobligated or done, but we're most confident this will happen, and the timing is we need to move in order to get that money.
You are correct, Mayor. The obligation process is in process. There's no guarantees that that's going to happen, but all the indications are that it's going to continue to move forward on that.
If then, for some reason, that doesn't occur, this plan will stay with us so that we can utilize it in the future with additional grant monies?
Yes, Mayor. That will be the case, and I'm sure if, for any reason that things were to fall through, we'd be back to the council seeking direction on how we should proceed at that point.
All right.
I don't anticipate that to be the case, though.
And the amount for the $112,000, how is that arra, how is that arrived at?
Parsons Brinckerhoff submitted a cost proposal, breaking down their man-hours into the various categories of the work they need to provide, and then adding in their consultant's costs. They have five different consultants on this project. As you may have seen from past projects, when you do design work that involves ADOT, it costs a lot of money because of the federal procedures that are involved in it. But since the design work's a minor part of the overall project cost, it's what you got to do to get the federal dollars.
All right. So our risk would be that amount, that difference in what we could get it designed for, perhaps less without having the federal constraints, but then we wouldn't be assured or we wouldn't have opportunity to utilize the grant monies? Okay.
You're correct.
Any other questions, comments on this item, other than from me? Sorry. All right, we have a motion, a second known from the public, correct? And all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item, council discussion direction to town manager. Did we have anything we asked, other than budget items, to come back next time? I don't believe so.
I have nothing.
All right. Summary of our council requests or reports on activities from our town manager? Anything to report on apart from our excellent joint meeting with Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation, which was most appreciated, I think?
Yeah, I think, I think some of the discussions that we have with them is going to set the stage for some exciting ventures together next year, including a celebration of their culture within our community and a joint effort to celebrate our centennial as well. So we're looking forward to doing that. We've also had some communication with the tribe already about jointly participating on Shea. They're part of the web that connects to Highway 87, so we don't have a second Shea Gap there as well.
Good.
We've also talked a little bit about joint master planning as well, economic master planning and envisioning. That would include the Shea Corridor and the Golden Triangle and the land east of us running along Beeline, so.
All right, we should probably get another effort to perhaps meet up with our other Native American neighbors, the Salt River Pima, Maricopa.
Absolutely.
See if we can get a joint meeting scheduled with them once again. But this one was real special because Fort McDowell invited us over there. They put the agenda together. They arranged the roundtable seating. It was a little more casual, and the full councils were there from both sides, which was terrific. I really appreciate that dialogue with our neighbors, and they are great neighbors. So I think the community also appreciates us staying in touch with our neighboring partners and leadership, as well as not just on the staff level, which is something that continues, but at the council level also. At this time, I would like to give outgoing council member Mike Arshambo a point of personal privilege to share a few words as he concludes his last council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I took a few moments and I started reflecting about the last eight years, and this is what I came up with. Now, I learned this early on, I got on the council. We're born in the family that our parents give us, but we live in the family that God gives us. And as a member of this family, we have a duty to invest our time, our talents, and our resources. And by not investing, we divest ourselves of our responsibilities and should expect nothing in return. Now, you may ask yourself, well, what can I do? I'm so busy with my life, I just don't have the time. The answer lies in how well you're investing your time in your family. If you invest quality time, you will know by the interactions of your family. Do they want to be around you? Are you happy when they're around? Do you feel a sense of accomplishment? If the answer is yes, then you are already contributing to the health of the bigger family that you live in. Two years ago, I received a Father's Day gift. It was a collage of family photos of my wife and I, my children, and my grandchildren. We were vacationing down in Cabo San Lucas enjoying the sights. Underneath the pictures is a caption that states, "My dad didn't teach me about life. He lived it and let me watch." That is a sign that you've invested your time wisely. Life often gives us a glimpse, if we only slow down enough, to see and listen. We often get ourselves so wrapped up in our adult lives that we forget to ground ourselves at the family level. We chase a career per status level, and we ignore the people we pass on the street. We often miss, on a daily basis, so many opportunities to grow spiritually from those interactions. My dad used to tell me when he was alive to look for the magic in an ordinary day. Now, as a youth, I really didn't understand its true meaning, till as an adult, I began to understand the atrocities of war that he endured. I recently enjoyed a production of Mary Poppins' The Gammage Hall. It is a book, a play, and a movie that's well-viewed, that has touched countless generations. There's a song in that play about an old bird woman. The song exemplifies what I'm trying to say to you tonight. We see the old bird woman by the cathedral calling to the crowd to buy her bags full of crumbs. She calls for us to feed the little birds and show them that you care. For the young ones are hungry. All it takes is tuppence from you. The song tells us how all the saints and apostles are watching to see who will hear the old woman's call. Now, so powerful a song is this. Then I looked around at the audience, and they were all drawn in. It transports us back to our youth, when worldly things didn't matter, where life was simple, under the comfort of our family. This is the view and the grounding that we need today, especially in these tough economic times. We need to depend on, on and to trust each other. We need to share our talents and resources for the betterment of our family. We need to encourage even the weakest among us. We will gain so much more than we give. If you want proof, just ask yourself if your life is richer because you moved here to the family of Fountain Hills. Then ask yourself, what can I do to help? I'll say to you to look to the old woman because she's calling to you. Now, the last eight years, I hope that I've demonstrated not only what it takes to be a good council member, but also what it takes to be a good steward of the people's trust. I'm not only leaving behind political capital, but I'm also leaving all the emotional capital that I've built up over these past eight years. The only thing that I ask is that you invest it wisely and only spend the interest. Because one hour from now, most will not remember what was said here tonight. One day from now, some will only remember a few short phrases. One week from now, most of what we did here will become memory. One month from now, many will have moved on to their busy lives and rarely think about what was said. And one year from now, all will become a distant memory to be recorded in the journals of history. 100 years from now, be assured, the world will be a different place. No one's going to care what kind of clothes you wore, the kind of vehicles we drove, the houses we lived in, or the stature we held in life. But for all that we have done and will do, the world will be a better place if we choose to make a difference. And with that, Mayor, I move adjourned.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. 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 Hit the gavel. All right, let's go. Good job. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good job. Thank you, Michael. I'll be happy to see you again. I'll see you Saturday. Can you get a copy of that?